The playing of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did they bring that machine up? That the they got their little mill.
Oh, that little player.
Yeah, yeah.
It's sitting up on the corner of the hive there. Okay, I took a look at it, figured out how it works and it's, I mean, it's the same principle as the regular mills. But instead of having a sharp pointed tooth on it, they've got flat teeth that are about this wide. And so as it goes around the drum, they're offset about a third of the width. So it gives you, instead of that group surface that you get with the mill, you get pretty close to flat surface on it instead. So and they can use it on either concrete or asphalt. So they haven't gone to mill anything yet because there's other aspects and kind of other issues going into it a little bit. It'll work nice for what if we want to do some patching or something, we could absolutely, it'll do, it'll put a nice finish, smooth finish on it. Which would be great for a bike path.
All right, well, do we want to call Dan or do we just wait for Casey has a chance to join us or?
The senior's gonna call as soon as he was free because he had meetings.
Okay. All right, well, we're gonna proceed without him. So chip seal asphalt. Luke, why don't you start with your thoughts?
Okay, well, let's get the easy one out of the way, chip seal. Do we want to wait and do it as per plan? Or do you want to change it up to do the paving, to do the chip seal this year? Save, what did we figure twenty eight, twenty nine grand, something like that to chip seal it this year versus next year? What you give up is inevitably you're gonna have a little bit of reflective cracking come through in the next year or so. Gives you, this'll kind of cover that up. If you wait, you've got the opportunity to go back and address a couple of those issues before you chip seal it. So that's the trade off.
Casey made a good point at our last meeting that I think. Hi, Dan. We have Casey and Nancy and we've got an engineer and a contractor and a street superintendent here. So we're, we've got everything pretty much covered. So thanks for joining us. We're just starting our discussion about chip seal. And I was just about to comment that at the last meeting Casey made a point of, you know, even though we saved twenty, twenty seven thousand dollars, it might be better off to wait. Just Casey, I'm paraphrasing you correctly. Yeah, it's a little, I think it's, it's always nice to save twenty three, four thousand dollars when you can. But I think in a project this size, twenty three thousand dollars is like saving a penny in the long run. And it's kind of.
Well, that, that, that savings. You know, we, we talked, there was a little bit of discussion via email there about the contract, the way the contract was put together and stuff like that. And it was, it was already kind of priced, I guess, based on the fact that we would be chip sealing over the course of a two year timeframe? Because that's just, that, that it came to the table that if you did it all this year, we would deduct this from?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. But I feel that it's, it's kind of a little bit of an insurance policy. So I'm thinking, I'm going to stay in line as Casey, that I think we should probably wait and just do on our map, the green areas, except for second up on Jason Hack Street. Because that was originally, originally just supposed to be a chip seal and they milled it. So I think that's the way we go. It's, I think it's gonna give us a longer and a better product. With Casey, you're on the same page too?
You know, I guess in all the other meetings with more, you know, I mean, you know, they were always saying, you know, it's like two to four years, you know, you know, like a good street to wait.
And I recall that conversation too, that you, you really aren't degrading the road in a year's time and stuff like that. You know, I think you're right, if, if something's going to show up, it's likely, you know, we saw it over on the tennis court street and stuff like that. You started seeing some settling and stuff like that, and that'll happen within the course of about the first year and stuff, so.
Nancy, what are your thoughts?
I guess I'm in agreement. We had discussed it previous and talked about waiting with the new stuff for at least a year or so.
I admit right away, I was on that train of, hey, let's save twenty four thousand, let's do it all right now. But I, talking to probably smarter people than me, I, I think it's, I think we should go with that. So that's what we want to be able to make, make the motion to.
I'll, I'll do that.
Yeah, we have a motion by Wolf to do just the chip seal on the original areas in green on the map.
Except for?
Except for second, street northeast.
Second by Casey. Discussion. Roll call. Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Hoben Hour.
Aye. Motion carried.
Okay. Asphalt path.
Yeah, stick with the original plan on the chip seal then, we'll do it next year. The asphalt path, the, the issue is, the original plan is to remove that pavement, put new pavement down and put a new path in basically the same level, same elevations as what's there. The options that are being offered up by the contractors as potential different way of doing it would be to simply overlay the path as is. Instead of leaving the existing structure in place, the advantage of doing that is that we wouldn't end up using as much asphalt. It would be a bit of a cost saving measure. You'd end up with a thicker path in the end, so it's gonna have a little bit better structural. It's gonna stand up a little better. Downside is that there's a bunch of, a bunch of cracking on that and pretty severe in some areas. That cracking asphalt, it's going to come back up through. It won't be as severe as it is, but over time it'll end up looking similar to what you've got right now, but.
Well, there's some of the discussion along these lines too, to identify some of those areas where we felt the foundation was not so good and do some, some tile over there.
Right.
You know, some, some form of repair to that foundation for that short section or do we just got too much of that?
Um, I went back out and looked at it again today. Previously, the last time I'd actually walked, it was last year. It's in a little bit worse shape than it was last year and worse than what we had videotaped of it. So I mean, it's definitely time to replace that path one way or the other. The, like I say, the, the advantage of just doing overlays saves a little bit of money and that was what contractors thought was. It would actually give you a little bit better structure underneath, but I don't know that it's going to keep the cracks from, from reappearing. How severe they'll get, how quickly, well, you know, that's, that's part of the guess.
Yeah, John and I walked, this is Pete with Mail. John and I walked the, the path together and it isn't just as simple as overlay because like you're saying, there's spots where it obviously would need to be fixed somehow. So there's, I think there's twenty five cracks that were, you know, a half inch or more, which would pose a problem if you overlay it. And then there's a couple of sections of maybe I would say, would you say twenty, twenty five feet? I would say.
A little longer than.
Yeah.
I think that first.
But you are, so you are in fact still saying that there's, there's section of it that, that we will still fix foundationally and then overlay the whole thing?
You would have to if that's what we're talking about, yeah. If we're gonna do overlay, there's, there's patching to be done in areas and the cracks to be addressed. There's like twenty four, I think, cracks that were, you know, well.
So from a price standpoint with those twenty four, twenty five locations where you have crack repaired and things like that, does it still create a, an overall savings into the project?
That's what we'd have to figure out.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that we just.
If we're getting to the, if we're getting to the point where there, there's no cost savings because of those type of things, if, if the other design of tearing it up and, and putting it all new and stuff is gonna give you a, a better foundation and a better long-term solution, then we, we just need to make sure we're making an educated decision here.
Well, that, that's where one of, some of the concern is at. One of the issues that, that the contractors worried about is that if they do take that asphalt out, that the base underneath is not going to be that stable. And that's based in large part on some of the experiences that we've had in that same neighborhood with the streets. And I don't know that we have, so if we were to stick with the original plan, I think there's a fair likelihood that we would end up having to do a bunch of base repair, which will add, actually end up adding to the cost. That we didn't anticipate originally. One of the other concepts that's been floated out there, and I'm not sure, Pete, you may not even be completely up to date on some of this. I talked to Ted about it, was to basically mill that existing asphalt in place and leave it in place and use that as a base. That takes care of the reflective cracking issue. It keeps the material there as, with the stability. And then we put asphalt path, the new asphalt path over the top of it. The advantage.
Then just mill it, parole it immediately and then, and then.
You got it.
Leave it there.
You got it. That may provide enough base for the contractor to actually have a little bit easier time of getting it paved again without having as much base failure. I don't know that I would hope that we'd be able to completely get away without it, based on all we've had so far, but it might minimize it. The other advantage is that it gives you, it gives you more solid base underneath the new path. It gets the new path a little bit more up out of, off the ground. What we would have to do is we'd have to import some sort of material just to fill that three to four inch shoulder back up and to be able to seed it. Otherwise you got a drop off, which I don't think you really want to do on a bike path. So there's a little bit of extra cost there, but the milling, I did talk to Ted about this, and the milling would actually be less expensive than the pavement removal item, so there's a cost savings there. So you'll end up with a net savings doing it that way and you'll end up with a slightly better product. It helps the contractor because it's gonna minimize you, reduce the amount of headaches they're going to have. I not, I can't say that it's gonna eliminate them, but it's gonna reduce them. It'll probably ultimately reduce the amount of area we have to replace, to reseed and regrade because of, you know, there's gonna be some trucks having to traverse across grass and that'll tear things up. So the, the net result is it's a little less expensive to do that. It's probably a little bit better product all the way around. We don't have the reflective cracking issue because now those cracks are all, it's all gone. So that might be a subtle switch with the contractor that we could make unless the contractor do it that way. Another idea that, that I had wondered about and I didn't get, Ted just tried to call me back a minute ago, but he didn't get back to me at times, whether it would make sense to just mill the top portion of the asphalt, leave the bottom portion in place and whether that might bridge a little better. But I don't, that was not something I've done. It was just a thought, random thought, so contract.
Maybe if you got the crack all the way through, it's gonna probably propagate its way back down, don't you think?
The worst of them will still propagate through, but not as much. Right, is that, is that the word for the day, propagate?
So, so what kind of savings are we talking to just doing mill and overlay?
To just do the mill and overlay depends on how much you put on it. We could even go to the point of doing all four inches overlay, which will again help to minimize some of that cracking a little bit, but it's not gonna get rid of it. And there's some of those areas are pretty bad and they'll still really, I think this whole milling idea is something we'll have to do in some of those, some of those chunks anyway, so.
Are you talking mill and overlay or just milling and leaving that?
Milling in place and then. And then paving, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so the asphalt path on Highway two hundred, the pavement removal, we got about ninety five hundred dollars. After that's above the same price, it's pretty close to the same price as the milling. Versus a four inch mill number that I have now. Four inches, two dollars and thirty versus four dollars and forty cents. So you're gonna save three or four grand if you did that. If we did the full four inches, then there's really no savings there. What did we have for, we had to import topsoil over here somewhere, didn't we?
If we do the four inches, we're gonna bring, you're bringing topsoil and have to seed it all.
Yeah.
Which is gonna.
We had, we had the seeding and everything already in there, so.
For the tire.
Yeah, actually it'd probably end up being less seeding than if we were to do the, just have them pull it all out, reconstruct. Because they'll end up tearing up more than what, what they would if you're just giving the overlay and slope along the side of it. Does the city have any stockpiles of relatively clean fill material? Doesn't have to be real nice topsoil for the bike path, just something that grows grass.
Not, not clean, not clean for seed.
I think that would be between the black dirt right behind our, our grass, you know, grass site where we're dumping the grass, you know, we're banging it up. I think that alone was some of the topsoil I got stripped off when they put that loose. So I think some of that would probably be pretty good black dirt.
I mean, that's, I'm just curious because like I say, it doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be really pristine stuff like we would be using in somebody's yard. It's just something that will be able to support grass growth.
Yeah, absolutely.
So having something available is gonna.
I think if a guy skimmed off the top of that where they're parking right now, who knows that stuff on all the grass, that would be good enough for that. We could take about fourteen truckloads back from Denver.
So really the decision point is, do we want to go forward with removing the pavement, putting the new pavement back in to where the existing is at exactly or pretty close to exactly? Or are we okay with them, instead of removing those millings from the site or remove those, that asphalt from the site? Is just leave it there to either in place as it is or as a mill product, mill products as a base for a new path? That's really kind of the point. As far as cost impacts, not huge. I think the highest risk of, of cost increase is actually to do the original plan. Because the. Than we anticipated, so.
I'm okay with leaving a base there and just milling it down and overlaying it.
Okay.
So then I guess like would that be like this four inch mill?
It'd be a four inch mill, we just wouldn't take it out, we'd just leave it as they mill it and then they would have to come back with it, regrade it, compact it, then come in with a paper. So it's the same operation to them. The advantage is now you've got, I think there's about three inches asphalt out there. So you'll end up with roughly two and a half base underneath that isn't there currently. What's underneath that, nobody really seems to know for sure. We had made the assumption there had to be some kind of a base under it for them to have built the path in the first place. But we've shown that some of those, some of those assumptions have been, have been proven incorrect in that same part of town on the street, so.
Well, one, one thing you gotta learn from here is you're not gonna have any kind of traffic on it when you, when you do mill it. You know, unlike, unlike some of the streets and stuff. And, and I know we talked quite a bit in, in our previous meetings that, that the foundation was maybe not doing it irregardless, whether you had traffic on it or not, but I gotta believe that that had some part in it as well, so.
But if we do a four inch mill, it's all done?
Well, the, the material gets ground up in the milling.
Yeah, yeah, so it doesn't matter if we're driving in or not. It's not like Dubai where we've milled two inches and then drove on it and just started it.
The, the one other thing that does come into play a little bit is the amount of rain that you guys have had in the last four to six weeks. That, that soil out there is pretty well saturated, so that works against us. So again, is there really a decision needs to be made? I think the main thing is if we make that change is, I mean, if you want us to do something different, I mean, you got the option all the way to don't do anything with it right now and come back later to, I know you guys wanted a concrete path, there might be a path forward if you leave it out of this contract and do a different contract for the concrete path later. But you know, there's, there's options there. We talked about all of those things, you guys in the past have said, no, we're gonna be, this is the route we want to go. At this point, it's really in my mind, it's either the contractor goes forward with the original plan and removing the pavement or we allow them to make that adjustment to use the existing material, mill material to use it as a base and we change the elevations a little bit.
So the problem that Mail has now, if we go with the original, is that they're gonna have a milling machine on there and they're gonna have to have a truck driving beside it on the.
Right.
Saturated grass.
Saturated grass.
And they're worried about just tearing the hell out of that.
Yep.
With their trucks. And then they got to repair that and build the path and. So they'd rather not do that.
I'm, I'm in favor of milling it in place, recompacting it, then putting the overlay over the top of it.
This, this strikes me as a potential little bit of a win for them.
Was that a motion, Dan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Wolf. Discussion. Roll call. Pillar.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hoben Hour.
Aye.
Okay, last item on the agenda is on the concrete path. There's a fairly substantial, I think it was about two thirds of that path, we ended up, various parts replacing. Now the eight inch, next to in driveways and next to the parking lots. Nobody's, nobody's talking about that. So the rest of the discussion has nothing to do with that. That work is gonna get done. It's easy for them to do because there's driveways and pavement right there for them to work off of. Some of the areas that are a little harder to, to get access to are broken up pretty badly and that's four inch. Those areas have to be fixed, even if they're hard to get at. But there are some areas where there's basically a longitudinal crack down the middle of the road or down the middle of the bike path that rather than try to get into those remote areas and try to pull that material out and then have to get new concrete back in there, drop a base in there, do concrete in there and put them back down, the contractor's offering a, an alternative to essentially take like a quarter inch piece of rebar and they'll drill them in from the sides in kind of a crossway stitching pattern. And then you'll fill the, you'll fill the hole that they drilled with epoxy, shove the bar in. The epoxy will set that bar in place and it'll hold those two halves together so that that crack can't separate any further. Then they'll come in with an epoxy fill, an epoxy grout and fill in that crack that's opened up. And some of those things are probably almost an inch wide, three quarters of an inch to an inch wide in a couple of areas. They'd fill that in and then they would come through with their planer attachment on their, on their skid steer and smooth that all off, so any little blobs and offsets and stuff. They would basically replane that piece of concrete so it's flat and smooth again. So they're offering that as an alternative to a full replacement on some of the slabs. We were trying to get a number, an approximate number on that and we didn't get that because we've been too busy chasing pavers. That's Pete's fault, I blame you. But I'm guessing that probably anywhere from twenty to forty percent of the four inch could be treated that way as opposed to replacement. The advantages to the contractor is that it's a simpler operation. They don't have to get into a remote area and again, tearing up some grass potentially. I don't have pricing from them yet unless you have that, Pete?
I talked to Don and he said that one still.
They're still looking at it, so.
So in this, in this scenario, there's a, there's a good portion of the concrete path that won't, won't get any, any work done to it because it really doesn't need anything?
Yes, there's a big chunk, there's a fair, like I said, I think probably about a third of it is, we never plan on doing anything to. Of the remainder, probably half of, probably a third of what remains is eight inch, which we're replacing no matter what.
Right.
So can we wait till the next, our next, next Monday for a meeting to have numbers?
For representation.
So that's the sixth.
And then understand that that works, yeah?
Is that too late, Pete? Two weeks from now on the August sixth, the next meeting?
I mean, they're, they got a lot of flat work.
They do. I'm not sure how fast they're gonna move through it, so. I don't know if, just as a hypothetical discussion point, if the rough, if the cost is in the same ballpark as the remove and replace the pavement, but you also gotta consider the cost of the gravel underneath it too. I'm anticipating that this process is gonna be less costly than the replacement. This is, it might incidentally save some money. Really for me, the question is more, are you willing to allow this change as opposed to having new concrete in there? Because what you'll end up with visually is you'll end up with the same smooth, flat ride as you do with new concrete, but you're gonna be able to see where those cracks are at still.
Which doesn't bother, that doesn't bother me, it's still, it's, it's safe walking, you know, it's not filling in with.
Yeah, it would be filled in, it would be filled in, not with something flexible, it would be filled in with something solid like.
I think it would be, have to be something we want to decide in a week, not two weeks because. So I'd say by.
Well, next week, if we need to pull together a meeting like this, I guess we have to, but we're trying to need numbers to.
Yeah, or if it's somewhere a saving line or about the same and you don't have to make, make a big decision for us, but.
You can start at a construction meeting if it's not a big difference, can it?
How does that epoxy wear? I mean, you mill it flat again, you're, you're gonna see the crack or that epoxy at the surface. I mean, how does that wear in the long term?
Probably better than the original.
I agree.
So yeah, it's not, for the purposes of what you're gonna be doing on there, it's not gonna be different than, it'll be visually, you'll be able to see where it's at, but.
Is that epoxy gonna be tough couple inches?
Yeah, the epoxy, it's a, it's an epoxy grout, so it's, it'll, it'll be the same as the concrete. It just sticks better than regular concrete does, so. But it'll wear the same.
So then are we just, we just like talking about the path on, on the, I guess, the south side?
That's that southwest side, yeah.
You know, if we're gonna do this next repair, maybe, maybe then on the north side, bike path, there's all kinds of spots that are split down the middle too.
You're talking about the one that's like by this, over there by the school on the board?
No, if you.
For the continuation?
It's in here, right here, this one, right there, yeah, continuation of it.
What about this? Now on Ford, I noticed this just today, across from Senex, that path there has some similar issues on about a forty or fifty foot stretch where there's some areas that it's cracked, but it hasn't separated at all, it's still completely flat, wouldn't mess that. But there's one chunk in there that it's the same deal where it's cracked and it's separated a little bit. What if we let, what if we just do that there in the next week or so? Do the stitching idea on that spot alone, plane it, you guys can go take a look at it, and then we'll just pay the contractor.
Is that asphalt across?
Just concrete.
You talking about the hub or?
No, I'm talking about right across from Senex on the west side of the road, of Ford, between the highway and seven.
Oh, on the west side, yeah.
Yeah, and all those trees, it's right in there, yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Luke, I was thinking across.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, that's asphalt, but.
You're right, yeah, that is.
That's kind of ugly looking too, but.
Yeah, I think.
Pete wanna, when they're getting done with the meeting, they'll ask if they're willing to go do that process to that spot as an example. And let's get some pricing on it for the rest of it as well and we can, that gives us time to nail down the quantities as well. Like I said, I think what you're gonna be looking at is you're gonna be looking at net minor savings in cost. Like I said, I think what you're gonna be looking at is you're gonna be looking at net minor savings in cost. Maybe it's gonna be more significant, but because of the amount of areas that are just too bad to do this too, we're replacing anyway. So, we're not talking about huge dollars. This is, this is more a question of, not is it a serious cost-saving measure like we were talking about on the asphalt path, but this is more, are you gonna simply accept that as an alternate method of construction to get the same end result?
Okay, so we'll make the decision now and see how it happens with that.
Alright.
Are we having a construction meeting this Thursday?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be part of it.
I should be able to be here.
Dan, are you gonna make a construction meeting Thursday?
No, I'm in business, we're holding.
Okay. Alright. Any numbers on, uh, crushing?
On the crushing of the concrete with the rat?
Yeah.
As far as the cost?
Yeah.
Find out great the Thursday.
Okay.
I'll find out.
See, yeah. I just don't want that to get left behind and since, you know, do it now, it's twenty years again, so. We got a lot of stuff up there, a lot of material.
I had two people stop there yesterday asking if there was that one.
Okay. So, what's up there?
They, they like that kind of stuff.
Yeah, they like that stuff. Hey, Dan, Pillar, anything else before we call it?
No, I'm in.
Okay, alright. Nothing more? Alright, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.